Good morning. It's May 21st, 2024, and I'd like to call to order the morning session for the Clickat County Board of County Commissioners, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and please note, all three commissioners are in session.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. So approval of the business agenda.
Do you have anything to add?
I do not. Other than I'll make a note now, just so you're all well aware, when you get to the minutes, I will be abstaining, since I wasn't, I was on vacation for both those weeks.
Okay, I would like to add a discussion on WASAC Legislative Steering Committee meeting.
Okay.
Do you have anything?
No. Where would you like to put that? Miscellaneous?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the business agenda with two add-ons, one under new business, the resolution to establish Clickat County burn ban for Zone 2, and also the board update on the Clickat, or the Washington State Association of Counties Legislative Steering Committee under miscellaneous.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just note that there will be no Veterans Advisory Update.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 22nd and April 30th, 2024.
And I will step down in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting minutes pass.
You might want to note for the record, did Commissioner Christopher abstain?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And so we're to that time of our agenda for public comment. We'll recognize you in the room. If you're recognized, please come forward to the table and state your name and where you're from, from the record, just a second. You're in a hurry this morning. And we'll also ask the same of Zoom. When you're called on, please let us know who you are and where you're from. Thank you. Mr. Morris, good morning.
I did. Two bowls. Anyway. William J. Morris, Dalsport Water District Chairman, 2024, Dalsport, Washington. Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Today I request that you move the Dalsport Water District water rights following Stephen L. Ossett Attorney at Law letter and the 2012 contract, alternative option 5.5.2.3. Please take immediate action on this request so we can have our attorney process your motion per the 2012 contract. Per the contract, the city of the Dals, Oregon, and Clickat County split the attorney's fees. Thank you. On a personal note, I wish to thank Clickat County, the Clickat County Road Cleanup Crew, Dalsport Murdoch Community Council, and all the community volunteers and residents that participated in the Dalsport Murdoch Community Cleanup last weekend, and a big thank you to everyone who provided food and drinks for all the volunteers. It was a resounding success, and all three dumpsters were filled by Saturday afternoon. Also, a big shout out to Anne Sleed for leading the effort and organizing this very successful event. Thank you.
Thank you very much, WJ. So moving to Zoom, is there anyone online this morning? Please raise your hand. I don't see any of you. So we'll go back in the room. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to give comment this morning? Thank you.
Dale Miles, Dalsport, Washington, and this is concerning our wastewater treatment. I am understanding that there's supposed to be an emergency increase of 5% on our rates, and I'm wondering why is that happening? And I'd also like to know first, over a year now, we've been looking into this treatment plant and wondering why the facility isn't operating as it should. So why are we getting this increase? And for a long time, we were looking for, there's supposedly a $300,000 reserve fund, and it's come to my attention lately, recently, that that fund is no longer there. And we couldn't find out where it was, and maybe that's because it wasn't there. And I'm just wondering, why is that? And where did it go? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So back online, is there anybody ready to comment yet this morning? Just raise your hand and let us know. 7211.
Greg Wagner with C. Does the county own the right-of-way along Knight Road? In the franchise agreement that Cypress Creek is wanting for this power line of Knight Road, it says, under definition of terms, right-of-way, all property falling within the area described on the attached Appendix 1, in which the county has any form of ownership or title, and which is held for public road right-of-way. That's the definition in the franchise agreement. Does the county have a perpetual easement agreement with all the landowners along Knight Road where the franchise agreement is proposed? I'd like to know what state law gives the county the ownership to a citizen's easement, if there is a law. Mr. Hunter said there was a law. If the county doesn't own the right-of-way along Knight Road, how can it grant a franchise agreement for Cypress Creek's power line? If you commissioners can answer my questions, that would be great. Or the county engineer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Back in the room. Anyone wishing to give testimony this morning or ask, have comments? Come on up front. Thank you.
My name's Leah Walton. I live in Dalsport, Washington, on 102 Vineyard Road. And I would like to, well, I kind of represent the Dalsport Community Deliberative Assembly, which wants to publicly thank you, the following office personnel for diligently completing our Freedom of Information requests in a timely manner over the course of years 2022, 23, and 24. The city of Bingen Administrative Employees, including wastewater treatment operators, the Clickat County Administrative Secretarial Employees, the Public Works Director, including mapping specialists, the Clickat Public Utility District Number One Administrative Employees. And now, in August of 2022, BOCC held a workshop at the Dalsport Community Center regarding the Dalsport Wastewater Treatment Facility and Collection System. Dalsport Water Facilities, because Clickat County was nearing the final payoff of both bones, of bonds used to finance and build the facilities. The Commissioners at the time, Dave Soder, Jake Anderson, and Dan Christopher, each stated that the county was in a financial quandary. And the only option that the county had to minimize the issue was to turn over the ownership of the facilities to Clickat PUD, as written into the original contract in 2008. With the KPUD contract, C11008, where it stated in Article 2, recital 2.11, once the debt is retired, it is an intent of the county to transfer ownership of the facilities to KPUD. Certain citizens and ratepayers of the Dalsport Sewer Service Area took exception to this intent, and formed a temporary committee, and became known as the DCDA. With a total of 17 satisfied FOIA's, the committee accumulated a list of 17 referenced documents consisting of approximately 12,000 pages. The committee produced a five-part PowerPoint presentation, and we shared this with our community, and a 46-page written report on this presentation. And finally, the Dalsport Community Deliberative Assembly would like to submit a copy of this report to the County Commissioner, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
May I do so?
Perfect timing. Thank you. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you very much. So back online. Anyone wish to comment this morning? Not seeing anyone. Be sure to raise your hand. Okay, back in the room. Anybody else have further testimony or comments? If you see anybody online, let me know. So we'll let Sherry go, and then we'll get back to you, Tracy. Thank you. Good morning, Sherry.
Good morning. This is Sherry in Houston. And I wanted to follow up with what Greg is saying about the franchise agreement. I, you know, there's so many times over the last three to four years, we've informed the BOCC of RCWs that are not being followed. And it's my impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this subdivision, political subdivision of Washington State, is to adhere to the RCWs of Washington State. And you took an oath to uphold the Constitution, which would mean that you would adhere to those RCWs. So I would like you to answer Greg's question. Please do not avoid that. Does the county own that land for that franchise agreement request? Was the franchise agreement done properly? And if not, not notified properly, then it must be rescheduled. But in the meantime, I would like to remind you that, as the Board of County Commissioners, on the front page, it says that you, as a body, can deny that agreement. You don't have to approve it. And for you to say anything else to the public is misinformation. To claim that you're doing it to protect the county is misinformation, because if there is no franchise agreement, there will be no power lines. That means there is nothing to protect the county from. That is common sense. Stop misleading the public. This franchise agreement is in a location that ordinance has been put into place banning large-scale solar over an acre. So my suggestion to this board, that you deny that agreement immediately based on several things, and breaking of RCW laws on the board's part, that's the end of that story. It's a no. No is no. The board can say no to that franchise agreement. Anything other than a no will show the people that you are supporting these corporations, these foreign corporations. So please answer the question. Does the county have a warranty deed and own that right-of-way in order to allow those power lines, transmission lines? So yes or no? Do you own that property? Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Tracy? Good morning.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to get my papers in order. So my name is Tracy McKeon. I'm from Lisle, Washington, and I'm here in person today because today I looked at the interactive map, and Clickat Avenue is actually in Murdoch. So all of you in the room and all of you online, this address problem may be fixed. Now, my question is, is how was it fixed and who fixed it? I know it was Jeff Hunter. Elise, Elise stayed on the phone with me for a painful hour, at least, going through things. I had found a Tuesday, August 10th of 2021, there was, and then again, June 18th of 2021, there was an, a contractor, agreement between GEOCOM GIS Maintenance Services Contract, a number 06.21, KCWA, and it's a GIS Maintenance Bureau contract in, well, anyway, I spoke with Andrew at GEOCOM and found out that they had the address problem right. So they had lat longs for 421 Clickat Street in Lisle, as well as 421 Clickat Avenue in Murdoch, and they had no other Clickats, 421 Clickats anywhere in the county. So that is when I called Elise and I said, okay, well, this problem has to be a counted problem. They have it right here. Why isn't it right in the interactive map? And so I haven't heard from Jeff Hunter or any of, anybody else of how the problem was located and fixed and what it was, but I'd love to hear that today. Then my second part of my public comment today, I saw that Jeff King was in the room, and I spoke with Jeff King, thank you, Jeff, for calling me back, and about my information being wrong in the emergency management, so in the alerts. And I asked him how I can get that corrected from Clickat Avenue to Clickat Street. And he told me that somebody, and please, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but he told me that somebody would have had to have made an account for me in the alert system online for me to have the wrong information in, in the alert system, and that he didn't know of a way that it could be corrected. So I'm coming here today again to ask if there is somebody out there that's putting people's names on, online in an alert system that are incorrect, I'm asking how that can be resolved, and if you could maybe ask Jeff King or Jeff Hunter how that can be resolved. So I appreciate your time. And, oh, and I had one more question, which I asked last week. And that was a simple question, I think, but I wanted to ask each individual commissioner, are you affiliated with any fire department, fire defense board, EMS board, or any, any of the rescue units? And if so, how are you affiliated? And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Tracy. So back online, and I see Dalsport Murdoch Council?
Yes. My name's Anthony Rizzi. I'm the chairman of the Dalsport Murdoch City, Community Council. My questions are today is, I see on the budget that we're going to have this afternoon, that five, over $500,000 is looking to be allocated to fix a lot of the problems with the wastewater treatment plant in Dalsport. And I understand that KPUD, the ones that are responsible for that, has said that before they would take over that facility, that all the problems had to be fixed. Well, I put it to you that they have been under contract for 12, 20 years, whatever, that they've been the one maintaining it, and they have been doing a very bad job of it, and that's why it's in such bad disrepair, that it needs a half a million dollars to fix it. So I want to bring that up because we needed to have a bid process put out so that we in Dalsport can maintain the O and M for a year just to find out if, you know, to make sure that we can do it better, and that way that we can take over the complete in the future. So we want to keep the wastewater treatment plant. We have our own utility district with our water district. We just want to add this to another one so that we can help take care of our own selves. And because KPUD has done such a lousy job with our waste treatment plant and needs all these repairs, we want to take care of it ourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back in the room. I guess we've got a race going for me, guys. Yeah. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Robert Brown from Dalsport. I was a member of the Information Gathering Committee for the Wastewater Treatment System. Just last year, the Dalsport wastewater ratepayers received a 25% rate increase. Now, BOCC is voting on an additional 5%. That's just fact. Late November or early December 2023, BOCC unanimously voted to open the O and M agreement for the Dalsport wastewater facility for bid. The BOCC instructed the Public Works Director to create a requirement for proposal document so the bidding process could proceed. It was expected to be completed by the end of first quarter 2024. It is now well into second quarter 2024. To my knowledge, this document currently does not exist, so the bidding process has not been established. Has the BOCC voted to delay or cancel the bidding process, and I am just unaware, or is the Public Works Director defying the BOCC? The current operator of the wastewater facility still does not possess the personnel numbers necessary to operate the facility to its requirement by the designers. Their operating philosophy is still reactive. No one is present at the facility most of the time during normal work hours. The facility should be operated in a proactive manner. One of their most experienced licensed operators has recently retired. They are responsible for more than a dozen facilities. And if my memory serves me correct, their crew is, consists of five or six people to cover over a dozen facilities. Has Public Works checked to see if the subcontractor and the facility are still in compliance? Seems that their operator has retired. It is the Public Works' responsibility to manage their subcontractors. It has been brought to my attention that there is a request for over $700,000 in the supplemental county budget being proposed to repair the collection system and wastewater facility due to the current operator's failure to do prescribed maintenance over the last 15 to 18 years. I believe that the current operation and maintenance agreement addresses the operator's responsibility to repair the system if they fail to operate and maintain the facility to the designer's requirements. I got a little bit of time left. Also, during a FOIA request to the PUD, we received many, many years of budget material. And in that budget material, there was a current theme at the bottom of the columns of a surplus or reserve fund of $200,000 to $300,000. It varied, you know, as time went on. The Information Gathering Committee has not been able to establish whether that reserve fund even exists, but it shows up in the FOIA information concerning the budget material. I'm sure if you guys wanted to, you could get ahold of that material from PUD. Thank you.
Thank you. Back online. Good morning, Rachel.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Good, thank you.
I would like to make comment on the wastewater plant in Dalsport and the issues. I'd just like to state that the PUD needs to turn in negligence issues into insurance per their contract, and we don't, you know, we don't need another 5% hike. The rates keep going up, and it's getting ridiculous. We should not be paying for their negligence. They have not done proper maintenance since they took it over 18 years ago. And I'd like to know, has there been a financial audit or a maintenance audit on the wastewater plant? Thank you.
Thank you. Back in the room. Mr. McNeil. No challengers this time.
Been hearing a lot about us.
Yep.
My name is David McNeil. I'm from Dalsport, and my narrative begins with, on August 16th, 2022, at a scheduled Board of County Commissioners workshop held at the Dalsport Community Center. As a reminder, I'd like to point out, disappointingly, by the way, that at workshops, neither audio or video are recorded. Representing the BOCC were Jake Anderson, Dan Christopher, retired David Soder, and retired Executive Secretary Lee Snell. From Public Works were, and present were Jeff Hunter, and soon to be relocated Gordon Kelsey. From the Clickat Public Utility District Number One, General Manager Jim Smith and others were present, but only the general manager spoke at the meeting, as indicated in a Dalsport Community Deliberative Report. There was a respectable assembly of the Dalsport Water Wastewater Treatment Facility and Collection Systems, and we'll call that facilities from here on out. Sewer Service Area Ratepayers present, including Dalsport Murdoch Community Council members, future DCDA community members, committee members, Dalsport Water District Commissioners, and including the Executive Director of the Save Dalsport Law Community Action Group. Key points to this narrative are, first, the fact that during Commissioner Anderson's dissertation at said meeting, he quoted figures from a document he brought to the workshop. Second, he also quoted a second-figure dollar amount he claimed to have obtained from a recently conducted Public Works Engineering Valuation Study. These figures were part of his explanation as to why the county was financially in a bind, and therefore transferring the county's ownership of the facility was necessary. Then he stated, the BOCC's only option was to turn the facility over to the KPUD, who, being one of several individuals that disputed this perspective, I strongly opposed that BOCC intent. We are now at a point where the, in the narrative, where the DCDA would like to thank Commissioner Christopher for his gracious act and cooperative effort, whereas I asked, is the BOCC willing to share Commissioner Anderson's document with our community? Promptly, Commissioner Christopher gathered the document from Commissioner Anderson and handed to Bill Clark, seated near the front of the audience as requested by me. Please note that they're also seated in the front row of the audience. In August 2022, was this, that year's elected, election candidate for County Commissioner, District Number Two, Laurie Zoller. Subsequently, a group of people beginning, being a BOCC Commissioner, a Public Works Director, and a KPUD General Manager have been perpetuating a misleading insinuation and to willfully misrepresent the authorship of the Commissioner Anderson's document as being created.
Your timer went off.
Well.
You can share your testimony with us, and we can finish reading it.
I can. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. David, do you have another copy of your document? Do you have another copy for yourself of your document? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, or we can get you a copy of it. Okay. Anyone else online? Seeing no one in the room. Okay, maybe we're coming to the end of comment period. I'll ask online and in the room one more time. Give you a couple seconds to check in and raise your hand. So I guess we'll close. Oh, that was quick. Good morning, Gabrielle.
Hi. I'll make it brief. Last week, there was comment again victimizing, or blaming the victims in the jail. It is not about open mouths get fed. This is about the individuals who were poorly treated, who, who suffered in that jail, because the people who had eyes on them did not respond to them, because the individual that came in with a long-term drug addiction was told by the arresting deputies that he would go through withdrawal By the arresting deputies that he would go through withdrawal and would require medical assistance. This is about the negligence of individuals who are in power, not doing what they needed to do to safeguard these victims. And to listen to the victims being blamed week after week is disgusting and it will never stand. The victims are the victims. They are not toys. They are not uh. Um, props that people get to use to push around their ideas. This is dealing with the issues of the jail should be addressing the failures of policy and procedures. And the and the work that different in uh departments do with one another concerning that jail and how you improve those systems. The other thing about these monitors that you're throwing attack idea at the uh of these blood pressure monitors. This company is not established. It's it's a fairly new company. You have issues of physics of getting through concrete and steel. You're asking for a county to. Um, after the twenty-five thousand dollars from the insurance company for initially purchasing them. You were literally asking for fourteen thousand more dollars a year on running the system. I don't understand why money isn't invested in the nurse that you've always wanted to have at the facility. You need to place a human face on this. And what are you gonna do if seven monitors are on prisoners, yet the other prisoner, yet a prisoner without a monitor? Has something happened to them? You set yourself up for another lawsuit because you didn't have that gear for that individual. I think that you create more chaos when you are sputtering to have a solution as as to just literally find the correct solutions. Thank you for your time. And again, stop blaming the victims and this horrific incidents at the jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby. In the room. I thought you were coming up for public comment. I'm teasing. Anyone else online? If not, it looks like no one in the room. Uh, did, is there anyone else that wanted to speak? No, I don't see. Okay, so we will close public testimony and move to commissioner comment. Mister Christopher, I think it was your turn. Mister Anderson, are you ready? Okay. Back to you. Well, let me see. Mister Christopher is going to wait to go second and Mister Anderson's still taking notes. Um, thank you for the Dallasport Water District Day. Uh, I think this is, this is your day today. Let me see where I'd like to start. It seems like you all had um similar comments about the wastewater treatment plant. I know I do not believe in my mind looking back through the. Uh, meeting minutes that we had last year and my recollection of the raising the rates. Uh, we were working on that with the P U D to bring Dallasport into. Uh, the new era and align you with other communities. And I think at that point, they believed they would raise it over a period of time to bring you closer to what other communities already pay. And so the rate that you had this year was substantially lower than other communities still. And then we would be moving that up over the next period of time so that it wouldn't be just one big hit right away to bring you up to where everybody else is. Um, and I think there was documents that showed that and meeting minutes that showed that, that this is not an emergency increase, but it was something. That has been planned and talked about. Um, as far as the treatment plant, um, I was in the room. That twenty twenty-two too. I was there and I watched the presentations and. Heard what the commissioners had to say about what was happening with the treatment plant. Um, we did pay off all the debt on that and so it does have to transfer at some point. That would be the the county's desire not to be. The owner of a wastewater treatment plant, uh, but that'll be a process to move us through that. I think um. There's a little bit of feeling that the uh work that's going to happen at the treatment plant um. Is devious and we're cleaning up something that's behind. But you have to understand, I think that was the working order of the P U D at all the treatment plants and they have on a schedule and they do those specific things at specific times. And so. Uh, the way you have in mind, the way you would maintain it and keep it. Daily or weekly is probably different than what that corporation, how they run their schedule. And that's my understanding and. Um, so I think the upcoming maintenance, we did talk about it. It's something that has to be done. I was told we have that funding to take care of that. And that's something we'd have to take care of before we ever think of passing it on to anyone. We can't. We can't pass something that needs maintenance on or even think about uh creating a system that moves that until we have it in. Top shape where it needs to be. Um. Let me see. Uh, I don't know if I have any more comments on the wastewater treatment plant. And I think, you know, just to. Make it very clear again, the lower rates, everybody knows was due to the landfill. And with the landfill cutting back and our dollars cutting back, we have less money to give out to the community. So. That was the driving force behind where this whole conversation started with the Dallasport Water District. Uh, to make it less of a burden on the county, but move it into a new era. And Sherry, in regards to Greg, I will look into that. I haven't had time this week. Uh, to look into your question about right of ways, but I will take some time and try to work through. Uh, the documents and look at those easements and answer your questions. And then Sherry, in regards to the franchise agreement. Um, the statement that we can deny any agreement, we can, but we can also put the county at great risk for litigation. So any choice we make, we have to be sure that we look at both sides of the issue. And look at where we need to land so that we keep the entire county safe and the entire budget safe. Uh, we don't want to be paying out for challenges or something that we've made a bad choice on. Some of those things take time. None of us are attorneys. We have to get legal counsel. We have to work our way through that. Uh, so I think that's the process that's happening now with the franchise agreement. Um. And Tracy, no, I'm no part of any fire department or fire board. So, thank you. Mister Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. Mister Morris, uh, are you saying that the county should transfer the water right while we still do not have a response from the F A A? Uh, based on uh. Years of working together on this project and the county is and the city are spending a lot of money on an attorney with the F A A. Um, you would like us to move forward without that. Um, I have a feeling that the legal counsel from. The county and the city would probably not look favorably on that at this current time. Uh, if you do need access to that water, um, as we stated years ago. Uh, we could start with a lease agreement and doing a change of uh place of use and a change of. Uh, the point of diversion for that water so that the district could get legal access to that water. Sooner rather than later while we continue to work through the the legal manner. This has been on the table all of these years. It's something that could have been completed a long time ago. And it's something that will still, even if we quitclaim deed the water to you, will still have to occur. And this takes time and it goes to go through the water conservancy board. The sooner we get started on that, the sooner it can get completed. And if we don't have to have the water transferred in ownership or in fee in order to do that. Dale, thank you for coming up. Thank you for bringing your concerns. Um, I would say that when you're commenting on the five percent increase. Uh, that we have a public hearing for that coming up. Please stay around so that your uh comments can be taken. Um, for the public hearing during public comment, we are not able to take. And usually during public comment. If there's a public hearing, we we actually are not allowed to listen to something that's going to be in a hearing. Uh, but your also statement of why is the facility operating as it should? I believe the facility has been operating as it should, uh, because you guys can all still flush your toilets. It's been operating for the last twenty years as it should and as it's been designed. What happens is is over the course of time, these um, these projects need. Your annual maintenance, your your weekly maintenance, but then you also need heavy maintenance. Uh, some of that falls into the capital side. What we have not been doing is saving money for the capital needs uh of the few, the the future build outs because the. Community has been paying rates lower than the average rates anywhere else. That money should have been, you you all technically should have had higher rates. For the last twenty years so that we could save money so that we could do these heavy maintenance projects that are upcoming. The numbers, uh, as we all know, in in all construction continues to climb. And it's climbed much faster than inflation and we're coming up on millions of dollars of refurbishment of this facility. The county taxpayers at large have been supplementing the along with the the landfill. The Dallasport wastewater system for the last twenty years because that was an agreement we we all agreed to do, prior boards did. Um, that facility was sized to meet the growing demands of a growing community. The community did not grow at the speed and pace that it was expected. And so of course, those those operations cost more to manage a larger system that has capacity. We're now coming up where it sounds like there is going to be a lot of growth in Dallasport. Hopefully soon, we've all heard that there's going to be growth in Dallasport. About every ten years, something comes up that there's going to be a massive project. When those large projects do hit, hopefully you'll be able to, we will be able to raise the funds to to fund a lot of those capital projects. But a lot of those funds haven't been able to be appropriated because Dallasport didn't grow with five hundred units here or a hundred units there. And so we didn't get those uh, those fees. Mister Walton, um, thank you for your findings document. Thank you for providing something that we can actually put our hands uh on and read front to back. Um, do you have that in PDF form that you can email to staff so they don't? I I understand. I was asking if there's an email so that they don't have to go and scan it because otherwise we, they have to scan it and copy it and send it to us. So. So that we can all three have one.
Don't read anything that gives you the go of Mister Anderson. So don't add for more than you give, okay?
Mister Walton, I was just asking a question. I'm sorry, I had your name down as Leo Walton. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry.
I wrote it though. So thank you very much for your comments.
All right. Well, we will, we will scan it and get it sent to uh the commissioners. I was just trying to avoid work for staff. Uh, Sherry, you sat through all of the agreements on the franchises. You've also sat through the meetings where we are asking. Um, do we own that property? That was a question that I asked of the public works director and the public works director clearly stated that. We have right of way through that area and we also have uh easement through that area. You're talking about misinformation and the public works director also made the statement that. A franchise agreement is to protect the county and the county's rights. He also stated that they can move forward and build it without a franchise agreement because it just needs a permit. Uh, in order to build within the county right of way. The franchise agreement's purpose is actually to protect the county. This is what staff is explaining. Um, so saying that it's misinformation when staff is trying to clearly explain. What actually has to go through to actually building it. We cannot issue a franchise agreement over property that we do not have an easement on. We can't just issue a franchise agreement through anybody's property. That's not how it works. In order to issue the franchise agreement, staff has to ensure that we have an easement or we have right of way. Uh, Tracy, uh, I'm glad that your issue is finally resolved. It sounds like I'm super happy. Um, I would also, uh, not to throw uh any water on this fire, but did you know that there's a click to four two one Clickitat Avenue in Goldendale as well? Yeah. I know I had to. But don't worry, it has a different zip code. So everything hopefully is, uh, I did though, you always talk about the Clickitat County I map program. Uh, when you open the Clickitat County I map program, it pulls in information from a lot of different um program. Different other outside agencies programs, some of it like the maps we end up having to pay for, so we don't update it very often. But one thing I wanted to be very clear is is that 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 program itself. The very beginning of it, when you open it, is this map is for planning purposes only. It's designed to be out there to help. Uh, the constituents. It's not designed for anybody to use to try to get to an address or anything else. It's it's a uh. It's a big cluster of information all put together so that we can try to do and understand zoning for the citizens. Um, so don't take it as, because those lines aren't perfect on there. I can tell you that a lot of them are fifty feet off. It's it's for planning purposes. Uh, in your question on if I'm affiliated with any EMS board or fire board, um. Sitting as a fire commissioner is one of two things that I promised I would never do and volunteer for, that and the school board. Um, so no, I am not associated with any. With that being said, I've worked on a lot of C W P P plans and um mitigation plans throughout the county over the last twenty years. So I have been involved in the documents. I'm just not involved in any of the management of anything. Uh, and I think the rest of it I'll leave for uh our public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to start by apologizing to everybody that asked about Dallasport wastewater rate increases. Um, there is a public hearing later, so I cannot answer those questions. I cannot talk about that right now. That would be. Highly inappropriate and out of order. Um, technically, your comments. Should have been held. Um, that was out of order. Um, I I have no inch, inch or no. I have no plans to avoid your comments. Um, I just don't want to be in any kind of a conflict during the public hearing. Um, on the rate increase itself. Uh, with that, to the end of the rate increase, uh, W J. I would really like to transfer that water right, which is not here, but he'll. Maybe I'll skip him and come back. Maybe he'll be back in the room. Um, Dale asked about reserve fund of about three hundred thousand dollars. I think it's closer to five hundred thousand. Um, that is currently where some of the money in the supplemental is coming from. We got the two hundred and fifty from landfill gas to pay for the clarifier. Uh, P U D wouldn't allow the other two fifty to come out of landfill gas. Um, so we're using part of the reserves of Dallasport wastewater to pay for the other half of the clarifier. Um, if you want an exact number on what was in reserves and what will still be in reserves after this, I would, I would say stick around for that. Public hearing later, cuz. Um, well, I don't, we may ask, we may not. If not, get back to me. One thing I do want to clarify is Leo, you read a statement that the the three commissioners were present at this meeting. Uh, and they said that they wanted to turn it over to the P U D. Um, I just want to clarify that that has never been my personal opinion. Uh, that is still not my personal opinion. Um, I personally have no intentions of ever turning that plan over to the beauty, just to be crystal clear. Right away, right away, address change. Mister Izzy, good comments. Um, you also asked about the funding, the reserve funding, which hopefully I explained. There is still some there. I'll try to get a confirmation on how much. There's question of whether there was ever a financial or a maintenance on it. Uh, I'm going to clarify that with the public works director later. Uh, Mister David McNeil, thank you for your comments, sir. And W J's back, so I'll go back to the start. I I I'm not the chair. I can't tell you can or cannot speak, sir, but. I'll read that. You have my word. I'll read that report. I promise you, I will read that report. Um, WJ, I started with you, but you weren't here, so I finished on and then I coming back. I personally have every intention to abide by the contract that you're stating. I personally believe this county. Needs to do that. Um, has to do that, although I do believe there are individuals. That would like to unwind that contract. That would like to. Maybe not. Value the water right at what it was when the contract was written in twenty eleven, but maybe reevaluate the water right to what it's worth today. And then say, well, see, it doesn't pay out, so it's not a fair trade, so we can't abide by the contract. I unfortunately can't get. I'm being careful how I say this. I cannot get legal advice as to why we need another consultant. Um, for the, uh, FAA litigator. They already consulted on the water right and valued the water right and everything once. But all of a sudden it has to be done again. And I cannot get an answer from legal as to why. Um, so I personally did not give my support to get another. Um, consultant to look at that. Um, I feel for you, but at this point in time, whether we do or don't do anything, it's going to be on legal and it's going to be on the city of Dallas Port. While I have, would have every intention to second this motion. Um, I don't believe this motion is going anywhere, because I don't believe I have a second vote. If you can get someone to make the motion, I will second them. I don't know that that means anything because we're only half of the solution. You gotta have Dallas Port or, uh, uh, city of the Dallas. Uh, but nevertheless. My vote will always be to abide by the contract. My vote will always be if somehow. If the, if it, if what I believe is true and there are people trying to unwind that contract. It will be my stance that if they do get it unwound, the Dallas Port Water District is. Paid restitution. Uh, for the full extent of the damages by this county. Which is a whole nother expense that this county is going to be liable for down the road. So they have two choices. They can either abide by the contract or they're going to have to pay the water district tech a lot of monies, the way I read that contract. And if that's the direction they want to go, number one, they won't have my vote for it. Number two, you will have my vote that you get paid restitution. Uh, for breach of contract. And that's what I have. Oh, fire. Yes, I am part of Centerville Fire Department. I have not been. Actively active in the last year, but I was for many years before that. I believe my uniform's still hanging up there. I just am too busy to go to meetings all the time. Um, because part of my. Meeting schedule falls on the same Wednesday evening that they do their meeting. I still show up to fire. I just don't go to all the, the biweekly meetings. Um, yep, that clarifies that. I'm good to go. Thank you everyone for your comments and if I missed you, please reach out to me personally.
Would we, uh, so we'll close comments and, um. Would you like to do the payroll? Or certificates? Do you have a couple of minutes?
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone for your public comment and, uh, not making any personal attacks. Uh, Madam Chair, uh, we have before us the consent agenda with eight items. My motion is to approve.
I will second the motion.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, or excuse me, any discussion? All those in favor? I, motion passes.
Madam Chair, we have for us, uh, the accounts payable warrants in the amount of five hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and seventy six dollars and forty five cents. For the date ending May twentieth, twenty twenty four.
I would second the motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? I, motion passes for payroll. Thank you. So department update from Scott Edelman, Planning Department. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Scott Edelman, Planning Director. Before I get into the handout, I wanted to start with just two things. Uh, one of my favorite things is a question that I was asked the other day at a meeting. Uh, which Cochran sister are you married to? Um, I, it's been fun how many people recognize the roots that are here from my family. Um, and I think what sticks out is, was just the volume of people who went to school with my wife or her sisters. What it means about this place. It means a place that people want to stay, where people will come back to. And it's really, I've, more than any place I've been to. People come back or stay here and if that's really neat to see and I know people have asked a lot about you, the commissioners is what's your legacy? I think there's also community legacy and I think nothing says more about a community's legacy than the kids, uh, wanting to come back. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention. I'm involved in a email group called Planning Two. And that's an email that just populates my inbox. I probably got twelve while I've been sitting here. It's just, it, it goes to every one of the planners and it's the number of comments we get and it's just constant. Um, it's all the various public inquiries. It's, it's a general box and. Those get answered regularly and it's incredibly fast how they get answered. I'm not the one answering most of those, um, but I get to observe and see how fast it gets answered, how professionally. Um, often they're accompanied by, um, building or public works comments or environmental health that you see in the chain. And I get to, to see the kind of customer service that this county provides and it's really impressive. And we don't always get thank yous, but I want to read just an email that we did get after a long chain of emails that involved several people from multiple departments. Um, and a person who's doing their due diligence, trying to buy a property that was in a critical area. Uh, wanting to know what they could do with these buildings that were with, it's one was twenty feet from a creek. And after getting several responses, very thorough, we got this email, Dear Megan, Denise, Lori and all. Because of the very helpful, friendly and caring responses and communication I had with everyone at the county offices and courthouse. I went ahead and jumped in and entered into a contract to buy the property at. I won't say where. I think I'll save everyone the consternation of deliberating over permit requests pertaining to the two existing structures. And instead do a proper plan of a new structure that conforms to all setbacks. I just find it very impressive that somebody came in wanting to use buildings on a site. But was so impressed with the customer service they received that they, that was, to me, it's a push over the top of yes, this is where I want to be. And I think that's one example that we see of the, the good customer service that we get. And we get comments, you get comments a lot from the public about, um, things that they like to see happen. You've got some this morning. Um, as staff, and I think I can speak for just about all staff, we see things going on that you don't even, you see things that go on that the public doesn't. There's, uh, I don't know if you want to use the analogy of that tip of the iceberg with the, all the, the big part underneath or the duck with the. Looking so smooth on the water with the feet going crazy. I see that all the time in every department I work with, that staff is often working hard, but behind the scenes and the public doesn't always know. Um, moving on to my report. Board of Adjustments is meeting, um, after going about nine months without a. Hearing, they've had three in the last five months with, including the next couple of months, June third, Smith R V Park in. Husam and then July first, the solder bow and wine testing room on Old Highway Eight and Lyle. Those are coming up. Planning Commission, last night, I can't talk about details, uh, Wilson Monroe Rezone, because you're of course the. The body that the recommendation will go to, um, but, uh. Just said, another example of a hardworking, both hardworking, uh, commission volunteers who are really doing their diligence to. Ask the right questions and delve in the information, um, as, as well as the public, including the applicant, um, bringing up right issues, asking the right questions, a very. A passionate community up there, over there in Snowden and appreciate their dedication to planning and being involved in their community. Um, as you know, the SEEP appeal will be consolidated with the recommendation that'll come to you eventually from the Planning Commission. Uh, which the deliberation on that has been postponed to June seventh. The, um, hearing was closed. Uh, the record opened only for rebuttal, uh, written rebuttal from the applicant and they'll presumably make a decision on the seventeenth. Uh, also on the seventeenth, they are going to be continuing the critical area ordinance. And because of their understanding that we need to keep moving on it, they've agreed to a meeting the very next week on the twenty fourth, just about the critical area ordinance. So they're continuing to make progress on that. Comprehensive plan, um, let's hope enough some news to you because May fifteenth was the date they're going to announce the. The, um, grants from Department of Commerce to, uh, community decarbonization. That's been postponed based on their website to late May, early June, so I'll keep you informed on that. Community meetings, I have to say, still in progress. I don't want to say a bit off more than I can chew, but there's just a lot going on right now and it's been hard to get. Handle on, on some things, especially with the backlog of applications that we are working on as we go through. I will skip down to site visits. I had a very good conversation with Jim Word, Word, Department of Natural Resources, the Clean Energy Program Manager. It's an interesting conversation, not like some of the other, um. Conversation with energy groups. He's the one who manages the properties for the purpose of profit for the state funds. Um, and so a little bit different perspective on, on the various permitting issues and impacts on community. And if it went into the interesting policy that I found out that I didn't know that you probably do is they don't enter into, um. Pre-lease agreements until they actually have the, the bird in hand. And I, I find that an interesting way to go and. Um, like not to criticize anybody, but, uh, I, I find that refreshing and I also found his perspective refreshing, a, a good balance on impacts. I'll just say that I think often proponents of energy are concerned about certain issues, um, farmland, cultural resources. I, items like that, environmental resources. I think it's often overlooked, the impact on neighbors and visual impact and. Um, on the investment that people make in their properties. And if you know, I was very, very pleased to see someone at the state level, uh, understanding that perspective. Code Enforcement, I just wanted to report without talking about any individual items. We've made some, I feel some good progress on some, a couple of different issues. Working with, uh, especially a couple of different festivals that have been ongoing and, uh, annual complaints that we receive. Uh, we've got them in a track for compliance, uh, that we're working on. Hopefully it's, of course, it's lost to get there. And then also, uh, there was one, a self-reporting one, which is very interesting. First one I've had, a pretty, a destination. I won't say what, but, uh. The who came in to us and said, we want to get this right and we see that we've got some issues and. Uh, what I wanted to mention with this is, uh, you've got a county and kind of staff that works with people and I've seen that with all departments as we deal with. Building, planning, environmental health, uh, really working to see how we can solve the issues, get people in compliance. But also understand that we need to, the best thing is to work with them, not, if we can avoid the path of fines or other enforcement, that's much more difficult on both sides. I went ahead and listed other current priorities. I'm not going to go through those. If you have any questions about any of them, you see there's a lot on similar topics. Um, and then other pending projects. So if you have any questions about any of the other items on my list, glad to respond.
You're doing, you're doing a great job. Just keep trucking along and don't get burned out.
No, thank you. I think we are doing a good job as a team, um, and it's only because of the team.
Very good answer and I should have said that.
Well, I, I take the you as inclusive because I'm, I'm only a small part of that.
No, and you can really see that you enjoy your work and enjoy the people, which is very important. And thank you so much for your leadership skills. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Miscellaneous reports, uh, border of adjustment application.
I have not had time to. Uh, find any applications to go with that. Uh, with that, not that I'm opposed to the application we have on file, other than the fact that. Uh, I know nothing about the individual nor where he stands on any pertinent issues. Uh, in the county. Uh, so it would once again be my recommendation that if he is not, uh, a personal friend of a commissioner, that a commissioner cannot vouch for. That I would prefer that the candidates get interviewed before the board so that we can. Uh, get a feel for them and make sure that they're actually, um, have a mind of the majority of the public before we appoint them.
And I'm hoping to get an application and, um, I've talked to a few people on the west side, so. I'd like, I wouldn't mind pushing it off for a week or two.
Well, unfortunately, um, it's been on file for a while and we could review them. We could reach out. We've talked before about interviewing them, reaching out, making phone calls. And this man is very, very interested. I don't know him personally, but I know he's well qualified. And after our last meeting, when he was sitting in, listening, hoping to be appointed and start functioning. Uh, he called in because he was very disappointed that basically. Um, he was left to the side again. Nobody had reached out to him for interviews or discussions or looked at his file. And he wanted to know if we could bring it up last week in our afternoon session to reconsider him because he wants to get moving and be a part of things. And I think we have a hearing coming up June seventh, which is pretty soon. They need that person. Uh, he is overly qualified to be on board of adjustment in my mind, looking at his applications. And, um. I would prefer to move forward with who's on file, who's willing and not, um. Make this a standard where people just don't want to apply for boards because this is what happens when they put in applications and they aren't considered. And I would like to suggest that we, if you haven't looked at his application, it's online. Uh, take a look at it and we entertain moving forward.
Do we know, when I look online, um, we have a list of applications under there that are back from twenty twenty one. Did we contact any of those twenty one, twenty two, any of those people, um, that were interested at the time? Is it, so then we need to remove them if they're on there that. Um, I, I, I hear what you're saying, um. I guess, and I'm also trying, I'm hearing what Commissioner Christopher is saying and I would, uh, I would ask that since there's. Early June, uh, that we, we do have interviews because I would like to get to know somebody who's applying. Um, and so if we have any applications on file, we do interviews next Tuesday afternoon.
Review the documentation, yeah.
We can always send that to him as well.
So, if I may. I understand the need for volunteers. I understand, hey, we have a live body, a warm body that's willing to fill a seat. Let's throw them in there. I think that's my opinion. If I was to do that, it would highly be. Not good. I, the Board of Adjustment is in charge of. Essentially granting special use permits like Cypress Creek Renewables, like under Canvas. I think we need to make sure individuals have the same frame of mind as the majority of their people. Uh, in this county and they don't have any special affiliations to things or, or, or whatever else. It's just, I mean, this is either a, what, a four year, a six year position? Um. I, I think it's responsible government to make sure the person you're appointing. Um. Fits the community and doesn't have a voice that's different than the community. Uh, that's just me. So you can disagree with interviews. All you want. And sure, I can, I can, I've read the application. The application looks fine, but it doesn't go to someone's. Uh, personal beliefs on growth, development, economic development. You don't know that from the application. Um, brain surgeon, sure, you're qualified for brain surgeon, but I, you know, so.
How long has his application been on? Okay.
Yes. So just for clarity purposes. You guys want us to put them on the agenda to be interviewed from now on? Is that what you're saying?
I'm asking that if none of the commissioners know the person and none of the commissioners can vouch for the person. Then that's where I'm at. That's how I would like to see it. I mean, if I'm getting a recommendation from. You know, if Commissioner Anderson reaches out and, and finds an applicant and he's going to sit here and vouch for that applicant, then if that applicant. Has future issues. I'm gonna. Go back to who recommended them. Uh, the same as if I said, whoop, I'll, uh, I'll vouch for Charlie Brown here. Um, if, if Charlie Brown has future issues, the voters get to take it back to me because I vouched for him. But when none of us know somebody, for all you know, they're, uh, uh, extremist. Holocaust, I, I don't know. You don't know anything. We don't know anything. They might be completely pro-solar in a community that's against solar. Um, we, we probably shouldn't know those questions before they appoint them to make decisions. For things like pit trailhead and, and everything else, because we've already found out that once they make the decision on the. we've already found out that once they make the decision on the Board of Adjustments, we don't have a say so. We don't get to go, well, sorry, Board of Adjustments. It's not like Planning Commission, which makes a recommendation to the board and we get it confirm or deny. Board of Adjustments make a recommendation. We don't have a choice. So if Board of Adjustment says yes to a Cypress Creek Renewable permit, it's true. I think we have to do due diligence to the voters to make sure the candidates sitting on that board represent the people in the community.
So I've worked with boards for eons. I don't even know how long ago the boards were created for watershed planning and fish recovery. And that was the instigation of a bunch of boards. And it was really hard to reach out and find dedicated people that want to donate their time and come in and educate them, pre-educate themselves with all the documents, then come into a night meeting after they've worked all day and serve this county. And we've always had a process where they submit applications. This year is the year that it changed and we started talking about wanting interviews. And so first of all, I'd like to apologize to the applicant. I don't consider you a warm body. I've looked at your application and I felt you were well qualified. We shouldn't ever consider somebody just thrown on a board as a warm body. They apply because they're dedicated and they have qualifications to share. Second, if we're going to want this interviews, we need to redefine our process. So when an application comes in, they understand a interview is required. And we have a timeframe that we talk about and set up where we set these applications up. We get their interview right away and we're not kicking this can down the road anymore because we can lose valuable applicants too. And we won't have people on these boards. We have to show them some respect. So go ahead.
Madam Chair, this is an interest, this is a little different because it's not a regular application that's coming up because someone's term was over. It was because somebody went from being on the board and moved to a different board. And so it's a midterm mid-cycle. So we didn't go through the regular process of, you know, putting it in the newspaper and everything else with all the other ones together. And I do believe when we wrote the policy back in 2021, there is an option for doing interviews that is written into the policy. And I'm trying to respect Commissioner Christopher's desire to do. It is actually in the policy.
But I, I would like to ask that it's not just in the policy that we actually activate it. And we put a timeframe that if your application comes in, we, the board activate and get so many days that we call them in for the interview. So we don't leave it just sitting in a file. Within 21 days, we will do an interview. Or you hold on to the application.
You have to, you have to keep the application period open for a minimum of 21 days so that everybody has a chance to apply, I believe. And even if you only have one application, the board does not have to accept that application for boards. We built that in as well.
But what I'm looking for is a policy that says if we get an application, we accept the application, we're going to move forward with it. I'd like to know within how long do those people expect that they're going to get an interview?
Well, I would, I would recommend the chair read the current policy and bring forth an item on the agenda to change the current policy, if that's what she would like to do.
Okay, to keep it organized, I will. Thank you.
I guess I brought forward an idea, Madam Chair, that we, we do an interview next Tuesday for anyone who has applied and who has the opportunity, if they're available next Tuesday afternoon, are you amenable to that, my seatmates?
When, when would you like the deadline for applications submitted to be considered for the interview process? Can I mean, can they turn in an application Tuesday morning and still get in on Tuesday evening if they so wish? Or do you have a deadline for application?
I would say Monday, Monday afternoon.
Monday business, if they have an application by Monday, close the business, they can sit for an interview on Tuesday. I am perfectly fine with that.
First round of interviews. And then we'll do interviews consistently. Change that policy, just meaning that not first round on this one application, just mean going forward when we change the policy, we know.
We don't know that we're going to change the policy. So you want to, so bring it forward.
I don't want people languishing in a file. Sounds like it.
For the interview?
Yeah.
Potentially, yes. So make it sure on the agenda, there's, there's the possibility for an action item.
Thank you. And you guys will reach out to him? Okay. Thank you. Okay, WASCAC.
Excuse me. So last week, we had the WASCAC retreat for the legislative steering for setting policy goal or priorities for the 2025 legislative session. This is the earliest that WASCAC's ever got those priorities set in place so that now the staff has marching orders for the next six months to start preparing because with these, these priorities, we're expecting that if we want, we may end up drafting our own legislation to then go to legislators to try to have them run bills. So that's why we started early. There were 42 separate submittals. Actually, I think they were in their 50s, but a few of them just got thrown out. Cogadet County, we, I submitted the proposals that we'd, we'd had, we discussed. The WASCAC policy team analyzed the 42 submittals, 42 that they deemed as actual submittal worthy. And they kicked out the county coroner, the unfunded mandate requirements that I submitted, they kicked that one out from consideration and property tax reform, changing the way property taxes are calculated. Wait, no, sorry. That one actually didn't. The clean energy property tax impacts, the legislation to address and remediate the impacts. That one they kicked out as well. And then they kicked out.
Did they kick that? Sorry, did they kick that one out because they?
I'm getting to it. So the first thing we did, we had overviews and then we voted to anyone who wanted to make changes to the ones that staff kicked out to try to bring it back in. I advocated for the county coroner be getting brought back in as one of them for discussion. And that actually got pulled back in. And then I advocated for the clean energy property tax impacts to come back into the discussion so that we could, I could get a little bit more leverage on the conversation. And we brought that one back in. So our proposals were moving forward and it was different this year because there's, the idea was to have six priorities, two from urban counties, two from rural counties, and then two all county issues. And so in the urban counties, the ones that went forward was new county revenue. So this is the, the legislation that's so hot, but the was really important. And that's whether we go from a one per, 1% to a 3% possibility or any other county revenue options that that would allow counties the ability to raise revenue because a lot of the west side counties are completely tapped out on revenue. There's just nothing they can do. The second one that the urban counties brought forward was legislative strategy for indigent defense and the caseload standards. And this is trying to get revenue from the state regarding indigent defense and the caseload standards as well as the unintended consequences of those caseload standards. You know, we talk about how much it's going to cost on the public, the, the one side of the spectrum, what we don't talk is the prosecution side because if prosecution has just as many, you know, cases as they used to, but you have a third of the cases on the public defense side, prices are going to raise across the board. You're going to see it because they all work together, you know, you could go from one side to the other. So there was a really hefty conversation that was really good on that. The rule, we ended up, there were only two that staff had pushed forward. One of them was local government options for funding affordable housing. And the other one was a county industrial land bank, land bank for GMA authority. When we were able to pull the other ones from rural that I submitted, the county coroner one actually passed. So, and that could be, you know, just getting the state to put in 200,000 to all the counties to help fund the corner position, which you know, the big counties are like, well, we already have it. We fund it. What do we care? And I'm like, well, if you can get 200 grand, just like it's a big deal for us. It actually got almost unanimous support. Then it was the first one to pass. We had really good discussion on the clean energy, clean energy property tax impacts, which, yes, ma'am. Oh, well, we can come back to this.
Thank you, Elise.
Tell you the rest later.
Okay, thank you. Did we have an agenda for opening? You have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Hunter. I knew you'd save me. You should have raised, waved a red flag at me, Mr. Hunter. So can I go ahead?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no, you can't.
Thank you. No, I'm sorry. We missed your timeframe. Wasn't your Thank you.
Something different from the Yes, that's a very modern, you see the three. We probably should have just stapled them all together, but.
Thank you.
One says Ben and one says 10 capital split. We'll get into these in a minute. That'll be much clearer. Yeah, it would have been easier, but then we'd have this big monster paper.
Okay.
You only gave me one spreadsheet. There's no way I'm going to have all this for the shirt. I should have just given you one like this. Okay.
Okay, so I will give the public just a second to get their documents.
Mine are right here. We didn't think through this.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing for the purpose that to continue taking public testimony with regard to the proposed Dallas Port wastewater rate increase. And Mr. Hunter, would you like to give a brief overview?
Okay. This, we're required to do this as a sitting board and you guys do rating, you guys, we have to look at the treatment or the system every year. They didn't in the past. They just did an automatic 3%. See where that got us with the 25% increase last year. So every year we evaluate the system. And we evaluate the cost and what it brings. And, and then at that time, we propose a rate which then this board votes on. You have two choices because this is an elected board, you get the right to vote on what the rate is because you're elected. If they don't like what you vote on, they can always vote for somebody else. If you were not an elected board, then it would go to UTC and they set the rates. But in this instance, this is an elected board. So, so with that, we looked at three rates. And the reason there are six spreadsheets is a lot of what's driving the rates and what we've talked about is the capital outlay. And that total is on, I believe, page three. Page two. Yes, it's on page two in 2025. And it's over $2 million. So what we looked at doing, and again, where we come up with that is it's not, that is not bad maintenance or anything else. It's worn out stuff that's past its life. It's projected life. To give an example, if your car had 300,000 miles on it and the motor started going bad, does that mean you didn't maintain it? Or does that just mean it's at the end of life? That's where we are with a lot of the stuff, the equipment in Dallas Port. Commissioner Anderson made the comment and he's 100% correct on the fact that, you know, usually those rates are set at the very beginning to apply, to build up a fund. And it was not chosen to do that back then. Instead, the taxpayers fronted all that capital upfront, all the taxpayers at Cogadet County. So through the landfill, not through taxes, but through the landfill. I want to make sure that that's so we're tasked now to make this system stand alone. So with a $2 million capital outlay coming up, what we did is we looked at, can we divide that and be more realistic? So therefore, we, that's why you have six spreadsheets. And then we looked at three different rates, a 3% increase, a 5% increase and a 10% increase to see where we were. To be honest with you, they don't, and then five across the board, just as a placeholder, because that's what most of the utilities are going to right now. If you check around, we've talked to PUD, we've talked to the cities. Most of them are at 5%. Some of them are higher than that. There are very few that are lower than that. It's just because again, like we've talked about, costs are going up quicker than anything else. So to get in, without getting into too big into the, so my suggestion is, as we did it with the three different ones, and if the board would like to evaluate the whole capital outlay in 2025, and what that means is you're looking at getting a loan in 2025 to pay for the capital. That's, that's how you do utilities. Typically you get a loan. If you can get a grant, you get a grant. But the whole idea is, is the rate payers pay for that, that system that they have. It's not pushed to somebody else.
What, if, if it was a loan, what would you be thinking the term would be?
20 years. So we, we built it out to 20 years with a, with a rough estimate payment of 200,000 a year. But we divided that and one of the other things and said, well, let's try, let's try it in two terms. So maybe we can do it in two terms. We get one loan in 2025 and then the other loan is in 2028, which would pay the other half approximately. So that would kind of segregate out the payments and would be more what we'd like to see.
It'd save you interest for three years too. It'd save you interest for three years, too.
It would save you interest, a portion of that interest, yes. You would end up carrying two loans, but that may be the more preferable way to do it to keep the rates down. Um, that would be my suggestion. Luckily, we don't have to tackle that today. The main thing we have to tackle is the rates. So, if you look at the top of each one of these rates, you'll see a, a, a tight, a little number up there, two twenty, or twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-seven. That's when the fund balance shrinks, goes into the negative. And, we have it up on the screen also. Well, I can't put them all on the screen at once.
So you have to pick the one and I can click on it.
Right, right, exactly. So, let's just do, if we're gonna do that, let's talk about the two thousand, or the five percent capital split. Cause that's, that's kinda, that's what we're proposing. Again, doesn't have to be, but if we put that up there, so it's saying that the fund will go negative in twenty twenty-seven. If we just do what we're doing. At the five percent increase. Again, we're, we're just plugged in the five percent because next year we have to reevaluate too. Every year it has to be reevaluated. This takes into no account. You know, it-
One more question, five percent. What was CPI and CIA or Forest last year? Wasn't it roughly five percent?
Yes. Yes, that's why we stick with that. We, we proposed that. Again, there's not that. It's not the huge amount of difference between three and five. It doesn't push that number out. Either way. Anyway, so it doesn't really push it out much. So, and essentially that brings the new wage to, or the new fee would be sixty-four twenty-two a month. There were some questions about the, what is in fund balance? And that is at the very end of this spreadsheet, right in this gray section. That is the existing fund balance. When people say, where, where is it? Where is it going? And wondering why it's, it's dropping because we are using some of it for like the clarifier and those types of things. We had a, um, we don't have the bill and yet the complete bill where we had the line go bad on us. Um, so those kinds of things have to be replaced. Again, this is not an emergency hearing. This is a typical hearing that we have to have every year. We will schedule it again every year. Until something changes. And we would have this regardless who runs the system as long as the county owns the system. I guess we can ask questions. I don't know if we want to go through everything. A lot of these, I'll let people digest what the, what the costs are. Ideally, the rate takes effect June first. The new rate. Again, you could choose not to raise the rates at all. That's another option. So we just looked at three, five, and ten. You could do something in between. You could do whatever you want. And at that point, I, I think we're done with our, our part of it.
That's great. Um, so we'd like to open it for public comment. And just, oh, public testimony, excuse me. And just be respectful of the individual that has the floor as recognized by the chair. And, everyone who wishes to provide testimony will be heard. Thank you and have an opportunity. So would someone like to come forward? Anyone in the room ready? Mr. Pebble?
Friends, this is the first, oh, Mark Pebble, Dallas Port Water District. Just now getting this is not really fair to us, but I don't see in here where the one point two million dollars they had on last year's budget for replacing the line from the cherry growers to a new line. Um, that would be added on to the, the two point two million dollars, so that'd be three point whatever. And the cherry growers, I don't know if you guys know it or not, but they actually are getting fined by the PUD on PUD letterhead a thousand dollars a day. If they discharge over X amount, which is ridiculous. We, we give, supply them out of a two-inch meter, all the water they need to wash all the cherries. But yet, the PUD fines them if they go over the amount that their system is designed for. That's, I mean, that's another reason that the airport is holding up growth in, in that, in their park, their business park. And you can't, how can you sell property that doesn't have the utilities that they say it has? So, I, I find it hard to believe that all this stuff is happening right now. And as far as the percentage goes, obviously, rates are gonna go up. And I'm, I haven't had time to look all these numbers over. And there's a lot of things missing from this, from the past budgets that we've seen. But we know that the, we've had two leaks on Sun Ridge Avenue. This year, in the last couple months, because of sewage backing up. And now, they ask you for money to pay for them not doing their job to keep, to inspect those lines. We don't know if they've ever inspected. As a matter of fact, we've heard that they haven't. And, and all they have to do is open the manholes and look in and see if there's flow in there. I mean, we're getting way overcharged. And it's been the past history that of just signing off on the contracts or the budget of the amount of people that, the PUD on the O and M, they don't abide by that. And they don't do what it says in the O and M or the state laws. That's so you guys need to make the decision of if you're gonna make them or the Public Works Director do their jobs. And, and check on it. I mean, there's no, no balance. No checks and balance. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Thank you. We'll move to online. Is there someone who'd like to make comment online? Being none? Move back into the, oh, just one second. Ann, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Good morning.
I do have an opinion on, on the status of the Dallas Port sewer, the, the maintenance and also the rates. There are a lot of ratepayers here who do have major concerns about the operation and maintenance program or lack of it on the Dallas Port sewer system. There is a definite lack of documentation. I do have a maintenance background. It's something that I used to teach as a matter of fact. I was on the tour over there. I was not especially impressed with the answers that we were getting and the things that we saw concerning how the operation and maintenance is performed and documented. I'm not seeing a whole lot in the way of actual documentation about what is and is not being done over there. That's been a year ago and I'm not hearing about any changes in the way things are being done. Uh, I have concerns that the operation and maintenance is not being performed according to the contract that they originally signed. And I think those things need to be addressed. Concerning the fact that equipment is catching the end of its life, that's true. But from an operation and maintenance standpoint, proper maintenance absolutely can extend the life of a lot of that equipment. Lack of proper maintenance will absolutely contribute to needed repairs. We have concerns of, if that maintenance has not been done, then the ratepayers are being asked to pay for something that was contributed to, at the very least, by a lack of maintenance. Um, the original contract, which I've read, does mention the sewer plant being turned over to the PUD once the bond is paid off. Looking at the timing of all this, it seems very convenient that the bond has just been paid off. The county has gone on record saying, you guys don't want to own a sewer system, which I understand. KPUD wants it. And now the ratepayers are being asked to bring the system back up to a pristine condition. Let's get it all in really good shape before they take it over. Um, timing kinda seems like me wanting to buy a used car from you. Getting you to pay for all the repairs and then sell it to me at the original price. Um, I do have some questions about whether this hearing is a formality. I'd like to know more about what happens if there is no rate increase. What function or service is going to be lost? And if that's not something that's documented and can be publicized, ideally before the rate hearing, so we would have a chance to look at it, then maybe this rate hearing is premature. I don't think it was advertised very well as a matter of fact. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you, Ann. Back in the room.
I believe it's industry standard that the collection system be telescoped and then pigged out at three to five-year intervals. And I don't believe that's happened. If you telescope the line, it gives you a condition of the line, whether it's plugged up or not. That information will allow you to order a cleaning of the line when it is most easy to do. Um, I am curious if there's any records of that kind of maintenance being done, cause then we've had this issue of spills and overflows on Sun Bridge Avenue. I do understand, you know, about end of service, life on equipment. But there is prescribed maintenance that needs to be done, uh, case being the auger. The brushes have not been changed in the auger. Generally, um, industry standard would be possibly one to two years and the brushes need to be changed out. The auger's job is to get the debris out of the intake flow. If you get debris in the system, things like the wasp pump and the Ross pumps can be plugged up, which would require their repair or replacement. There's been a bit of research done on the cost of these pumps. And, these pumps can be had for about half of what is showing in this sheet that I was handed today. So there's definitely cost savings that could, could happen. As far as a rate increase, at this point, we're paying sixty-one dollars a month. A ten percent increase would be six dollars and ten cents. I know for some people that could be a lot, but for others of us, it could pad a reserve, you know, to help the system down the road. Also, if the system becomes indebted while it's owned by the county, then that in turn ensures that the county has to maintain ownership. Is that correct? So anyway, that's kind of things I've got to say. I will, with my little bit of time going back, the binging system has a person onsite at the plant forty hours a week. The designers of the Dallas Port plant recommended sixty hours a week. It is very well-known throughout the community that at any time you can drive over to that plant and the gates are locked and nobody's there during what would be considered normal work hours. And this happens repeatedly. The staffing at the current operator just is not sufficient to properly operate the plant to the designer specifications. Thank you.
Back online. Just raise your hand if you wish to comment. Dallas Port Murdoch Council.
Yes, this is Anthony Rizzi once again. I'm not gonna talk today as the chairman of the council. Today, I'm gonna talk about the fact that I'm a twenty-year Air Force retiree. During my time in the Air Force, I spent several years as a preventive maintenance supervisor. And what you're gonna hear today, you've already heard, you're gonna probably hear some more, is that the problem with the Dallas Port facility is it was not maintained. One of the things you learn when you have expensive equipment, and mine was all electronics, but you have to do preventive maintenance on a schedule. And by doing that, you don't have catastrophic breakages and having to replace equipment because you've done your preventive maintenance. And what we are pointing out and will continue to point out is KU, KPUD was not doing their maintenance. They were not taking care of the plant. They were not replacing the brushes. They were not doing a lot of things. Why? Because they are only reactionary. When there's an alarm or an outage, then they go out there and do something. But there, if you look at the records and all the things that we looked in the FOIAs, they were not doing their job and they should not be paid large sums of money to do nothing. And that's what we have found out. Now, we're asking that the, give us the chance to do the OM, O and M for at least a year, two years. And if we, if you find we can't handle it or do it cheaper than KPUD, then sure, you can do what you want with it, but we think that we can do a better job and eventually we could take over that plant ourselves. Cause it someday, we hope to become an incorporated city. And when we do that, we want to have our utilities under us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back in the room. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeanette Johnston, a newbie to the Dallas Port of the last four years. My biggest concern, like the others, um, are the PD trying to increase our five, us five percent. And then just raising taxes. Where's this supposed to come from, from these folks? Most of us are very, um, much a retired community on fixed incomes. We, the people, voted each of you guys in, in true faith. Sorry. A little emotional here. I guess I would really like to see something done there. These folks, some of these folks have been there for years, working on trying to get something done. We don't even have a park. Anyway, motions in check. I'm a little under the weather, so bear with me. Anyway, needless to say, folks, please consider, uh, I might have had one more thing to say here. I guess my time's still okay. The wastewater business was handled very well with conversations from the last two folks. I think they handled that just fine, but that's also something that is a huge concern for all of us. Anyway, thank you for your time today, each of you, and, um, we hope to see some changes.
Anyone else online? You've got a few minutes left. If someone else would like to speak? Anyone else in the room? Sherry, we'll come, we'll come back to you, Sherry.
It's Leo Walton again, from one oh two Vineyard Road in Dallas Port and, uh, Dallasport and the thing that concerns me the most is the sewage spills that we have had. And from what I understand, the DEA, the, you know, the Department of Ecology, Health Department, they expect the wastewater treatment center to self-report any spills. Okay? And if it's, I don't know, twenty five or fifty gallons, whatever it is. Well, we had next to the Sunridge lift station, a spill three years ago that literally put in the lawn in the house below it, there was sewage on the lawn, okay? If they would have reported that, because I could not find anywhere that they have ever reported any spills whatsoever. And if they did report it, would the Health Department or the Planning Commission turn around and allowed a house to be built within twenty feet of the pump station? That's setting the wastewater treatment plan up for a big lawsuit right there, just soon as it floods and it floods that brand new house right next door. I've seen that before. I do not like it. And it's a major cost. But it's also the health of our citizens and non-reporting. If we don't have a report, how do I know what happened on the street next to us? I don't. Unless I see it. So Dallasport, whenever we see the trucks out or something like that, we're taking pictures and we're documenting. And if we have to, if you guys won't make the Public Works Director oversee all the the requirements that you have for an RCW in the contract, then maybe we should turn around and just take all this information up to the newspapers and let the ratepayers and the taxpayers who have supported this. Any. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Rachel?
Yes, this is Rachel Schwab from Dallasport, and I am not nearly as eloquent a speaker as Ann or Anthony, and I would just like to voice my support for what the issues that they brought up.
Thank you. Did Sherry get back on? Okay, and Sherry, finally, thank you.
Yeah, you know, I, I do like to comment in public hearings, even though I don't live in Dallasport. I'm in Houston. I, when I hear other people that are affected negatively, I like to help support them. You know, that's what we should do. No matter if it affects us directly, we should care about our fellow man. And listening to the comments, you know, it sounds like the taxpayers, the, the waste treatment water ratepayers are the ones who have to foot the bill in order for a system to be, you know, brought up to speed when it was neglected. And then it just sounds like that the PUD will also just take it over and own it, I'm guessing, because nobody's really, unless you live there, is really in the know of all this. And so it reminds me of how the taxpayers will pay for roads like Courtney Road. And in my opinion, that was a complete favor for the building of people who want to build up there. But yet, the taxpayers paid. We don't even know how many millions of dollars. It's, I think, around eight or whatever, and it's like for personal favors. And so now it's concerning why a town or, you know, that hopefully one day they will become the incorporated city they want to be. But how do the ratepayers buy and pay a system that they would like to keep and all of a sudden the government just comes in, ups their rates and says, we're taking it. So it seems to me, again, not knowing the whole story, that the taxpayers, the ratepayers, just fund the big corporation we call government. And it's not fair to the people. Stop, you know, plundering us. I mean, everything. And I'll, I'll tell you this. No matter what is said today, this is my belief. Prove me wrong. That no matter what is said, no matter how it negatively affects the people who will have to pay, no matter how it negatively affects anybody, and all these comments that you'll hear today, it's, this is just a formality. You will approve the, that high rate in increase. And then you'll say, oh, it pains me to have to do this, whatever little show you do. But you're hearing from the people who live there. You should do what the people want you to do that live there. End of story. Don't just do what you want to do to benefit your bank account or to give that away to another agency or whatever, another corporation. Like, come on, guys. Do what's right for the people for once.
Thank you, Sherry. Anyone in the room? Mr. Clark.
Yes. My name is Bill, excuse me, Bill Clark. I live in Dallasport, two hundred third Avenue. I'm also involved with the Community Council. This is basically a call for corrective action. I'm going to read this statement. These actions that are required to be acted upon by the county will not be a truncated governmental process. But it will offer the county immediate political catharsis and clarity with regards to leadership in a moment of crisis that a failed policy and procedure effort coupled with the actions that do not speak well for previous county administrations were permitted to evolve. Whereas from the beginning, with first known engineering study and perpetuated in the planning stages of the Dallasport Wastewater Treatment Facility, the Board of County Commissioners at the time simply ignored proven engineering standard operating procedures provided by a qualified, certified professional engineering rate study, which was paid for by the county taxpayers. This was published in the Executive Summary of Conclusions, as described in the Kennedy Jinks Consultant Final Rate Study in August two thousand two. Therefore, preserve, excuse me, preserved over twenty plus years as the bonds were paid off and it continues to this day. Henceforth, in two thousand twenty-two, when a Dallasport Murdoch Community Council Temporary Committee called the Dallasport Community Deliberative Assembly, better known as DCDA, came into existence, this handful of dedicated sewer service area ratepayers and Dallasport Water Treatment Facility, along with highly qualified and certified county residents began researching the depletion and the physical depravity which was allowed to descend upon this once pristine state of the art facility. The DCD has documented this fact with the PowerPoint presentation produced for the community of Dallasport and in a forty-six page documentation report, including two maps, a table of contents, three-part bibliography listing all the freedom of information requests for the public information, a list of reference documentation, and a final approximate tally of nearly twelve thousand pages. Bottom line is a change of operation and management contract and leadership is paramount for the health, safety, and welfare of the Dallasport Peninsula residents. The future growth within its immediate boundaries, as declared by the federal administration, a special management area. This was referred to as the Dallasport Gorge Urban Exempt Area, specified by the Columbia Gorge National Scenic Area Act November nineteen eighty-six, signed by President Reagan as a new federal protection. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Anyone else online today? Lynn? Did you wish to speak, Lynn? She unmute? Okay. In the room, anyone else?
Hello, Commissioners. This is Tracy, and I'm representing a friend of mine that has property in Dallasport. He owns lot six, lot seven, lot eight on Elm Street in Dallasport, and he also owns lot five on Poplar Drive and lot ten on Oak Street. And he, I, I had offered to help him do what I thought would be an easy either lot line adjustment or boundary adjustment to fi, to be able to split up his lots five, six, seven, five, and ten, because they are, five, six, and seven are together. Nine, five, five and ten are together, six, seven, and eight are together. And he, they're one hundred by hundred lots. Except for a lot five, it's a fifty by a hundred, but there's also fifty by a hundred is on either side of him. So I went to Denise at the Planning Department to do a legal lot, legal lot determination. And the county found that he could only have lots eight, seven, and eight on the Elm Street with only a forty-foot section of lot six separated. So that would be his two lots, which lot six at forty by a hundred is not a buildable lot. When he tried to split up the lots ten and five from Oak Street and Poplar Street, he found one, one is a hundred by a hundred, the other is fifty by a hundred, and it, it ho, hosts the the pump for the Dallasport Water System. He was told that he was unable to split either one of those lots up. I'm here today because if people were, you know, I think it was Mr. Christopher that said that Dallasport hasn't grown in the rate that they thought it would. If the county would allow this person to split up the lots six, seven, and eight into three individual lots, he would build on those lots. He would put in a, a, this, it would give you one more user on your system here, one more water user and more tax lots in the county. On lots, on the one on Oak Street, he would split up that hundred by a hundred and that fifty by a hundred into two homes, making another connection again for this system and tax lot for the county to be able to get that property tax from. So I'm here today saying that this is more than just a rate increase thing. It's the county looking at this zoning or the, the land lot size and, and really thinking about it. I mean, it's a fifty by a hundred lot, big enough for a house. I think so. There's other ones there. In fact, there's even smaller ones there. So I know my time is about up, but I support the Dallasport Water District, and I hope that they can get their wastewater treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online? No more. Anybody in the room?
I have a correction on those numbers. The PUD allows thirty gallons per minute discharge. And we give them three hundred gallons a minute in water supply. And that is
And here it
That's what they should be able to discharge.
Yeah, and you have to come up to the microphone. They can't. Oh, and I'm sorry, Mark. I've been reminded we don't allow people to speak twice, but you can, yeah.
It's a correction.
So Lynn, would we like to try you again? Did you wish to speak, Lynn? You're unmuted, but we don't see your hand up. Hadlock? Nope. Maybe a technical error. Yeah. Okay. Well, if there's no one else with comment, no one in the room or no one on Zoom? Any, anybody else that hasn't gotten to speak? Last chance. So the board's opportunity for clarifications?
Staff?
Thank you.
Have we completed or where are we at in the process for the wastewater O and M bid document?
We have not completed it. We've been overrun by all kinds of other things. Massive public records requests which take a numerous amount of time. We are down staff members. I have two, more than two people out due to medical issues. And so, no, we have not had an opportunity. Also, please keep in mind, since PUD moved forward on the Clarifier project, they will have a contract with a contractor. So whatever we would do would have to come after that. I mean, we could, we could go through the process, but you could not remove them until that contract was over.
Do you have a timeline for when you believe the bid document?
I do not. I have not had a chance to follow up with PUD on that, sure.
All right, I, I will set that question aside for further discussion on the board when we have time for it. There was a question earlier about a maintenance study. Has there been one? Yes or no? And if there has been, is it a public document?
Yes, there, a maintenance study, there was a study done. Yes, there was. We've submitted it. It's been requested many a times through when we did the sewer plan, which we never moved forward with because we couldn't determine essentially what we were going to do, and that needs to be put in because it's sent to DOE. They also look at how the system is functioning. Also, P, I have a report from DOE where there was, where DOE said the system is running very well.
Well, I, I guess my question is, I, I think the question asked of us earlier is not is the system functioning well, but has there been anybody brought in to look at how the PUD is operating the system to say, yes, they're operating it correctly up to standard? They're cleaning things correctly. They're picking lines correctly. That kind of a thing is the question I think.
When DOE goes through, they sent two inspectors down. They spent two days there. They go through it with their people and everything else. We got a clean bill of health from DOE. The system is running, is maintained properly. The only, you know, again, I'm cautious to say this. The only black mark on that was is the equipment needs to be, there needs to be a plan to replace the outdated equipment.
Okay, those are the only clarifying questions that staff has.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff, on the labor, it shows two hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars from two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-nine. Is that realistic? That it's going to cost the same when everybody gets pri, increases?
I it, again, we just plugged it in and just kept moving it because I don't know what their, what their system, you know, what there is. So we kept that as what it is today. We know what it is today because we get it in their budget. But again, we create, so yes, no, it's probably not realistic. But PUD has no play in this. This is all us, Pam and I spent hours, more Pam than me, creating this spreadsheet.
Thank you. On here, it shows Clickatac County expenses, forty-eight thousand in two thousand twenty-three, sixty-two thousand this year, and that looks like that inflates at probably about a three percent increase. Is that what you did?
Yes, we can. I believe that's what we did. We should, we can do ours because we know what our
For our, for our costs, we added about three percent, but we didn't add an inflator for staffing. So if, if we assume that staffing is going to go up, we could look at the end number and assume that there's three percent compounded annually that's going to make a change. Okay, my next question, two thousand twenty-three contractors of sixty-nine hundred and forty, two thousand twenty-four is sixty-one five. Why is it sixty-one five for two thousand twenty?
Good question. Good question. We had heard talk, you know, the lines have been inspected and they have been picked out. This is the last part of the piggy this year. Where they, there's one more run to do, and that's the Sunridge run. Everything else has been done. So that sixty-one thousand is So that sixty-one thousand is in there. If we would have wanted more sheets, we go out to thirty, thirty-three and our twenty, thirty-three, and in thirty-two, it's scheduled to do another piggy, but at that time it'd be, it's in the excess of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what we're estimating.
So we're expecting no pigging between now and then and no other costs?
Right, because we just finished, just the other, just last year. And now, or we'll finish this year, sorry. We, we did the other lines last year and the year before. To kind of break it up, to break the cost up.
Thank you. And is it ten year, the average or the expected for piggings? We heard five from somebody is
It can be five to 10, depending if you have any problems. It is five if you're running it max. Please keep in mind, our system runs at about forty percent. Because yes, it's a big system. And it doesn't have the capacity, you know, we don't, we need a lot more development to add capacity to the system. System has plenty of capacity.
Next question, power costs for thirty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty in 2023, we put thirty-seven thousand flat across the board. Was that staff thinking that costs are going to go down in, in electricity or where, what are we thinking there?
That could be an oversight on our part. I'll, I'll be honest on, on those costs. Again, those, the three costs here on this last page, it does, again, I don't want to get into discussion who runs it, but I'll just put this into this system. It doesn't matter who runs it, these costs are fixed. I mean, not at this price, but these, you're not going to change the electricity cost.
I'm just trying for budgeting purposes to have an accurate budget for what we need to raise.
We can look at nailing that down a little bit more. I apologize, we did this late at night and
No problem.
Missed some of this stuff.
And to ask the questions.
No.
Let's get quick clarifying. So technically, all you're looking for out of this public hearing is, is there a rate increase? And if so, what percent? We can decide if there's a split or no split later.
Right, that's all
Just the percent? We're not talking about O and M contracts, we're not talking about capital split or not, that's decisions for a future date. This is only, is there a rate increase? If so, at what percent?
And that's the only thing we're under the gun on. And again, a zero rate, could that be done? Yes.
What is your under the gun, when do you need to know by?
Well, we're, we set the rates, and this is by our own ordinance with it, June first. That's when the new rates go into it.
My, my question is, these documents were not necessarily provided, everybody would do time to look at them and think. So if this board wanted to not make a ruling today and hold it over till next week, so people had time to add verbal or sorry, written comment, once they have time to look at the documents, would that throw off your time schedule at all? And then we can make a decision next week.
It wouldn't as long as the board is okay, you know, we would date the letter, it may not get to the people before June first, just telling them that was the that was the rate increase. Again, we picked five percent because that's what, that's what most of the rates are going up in the area. Board could choose to do zero, but again
Well, I think the board could probably even give you where their head is at today.
Right.
So that you can pre-plan and then by all means, we might change our main based off what
And again, it's the board's decision.
Okay, that's all I have.
It seems like when I, when I look at this staffing administration, and then I look at the maintenance, where do you put for unexpected issues, things that come up that need to be budgeted in there, say a pump goes out or, or there's, you know, like pigging that needs to happen? There's a sewage leak that happens, where is that built into the budget? And are you building that in or is that just coming straight out of?
Comes out of fund balance.
Comes out of fund balance, so we are not budgeting for that. Do we have an average over the last few years of what that, what that is?
We would have to look, it's been kept down quite a bit because ultimately you would have heard about it. So yes, it has, we've kept it down quite a bit. The leak they had that I showed you, gave you a picture of was something that was done when the, when the plant was built. But typically with plants or with, with it's pretty, you know, you try to keep a fun balance, so if something happens you have that. Typically, you have extra pumps and that kind of thing in case something goes down. And then the next, you know, we would have, then we would go and look to purchase a new pump to replace it.
But what I'm getting at though is, is in, in many budgets that I work on, we have a line item for contingencies.
Right.
And we have not designed that in here, but if you, if I were to ask for a ballpark number for contingencies, it's twenty thousand dollars about average for what a year could cost for things that happen. What should that be? So when we're designing our operating, this is what it actually costs to run it, not pulling things out of fund balance.
Right, let me check on that so I get, I'll, I'll have a better number for you if that's okay.
Thank you. Those are my questions for now.
And they asked my questions already, it was the maintenance records and also the sixty-one five I was interested in. So if the board has nothing else, is there anyone else who has came into the room that would like to comment that didn't get a chance?
Madam Chair, if I may before. What I would ask that this is public testimony, so when you start public testimony, please state whether you're for or against and which of the options you are for or against so that we can actually hear. Talking about everything that else that has to do with the wastewater system is not pertinent to the discussion here, we need to be talking about the rates. And if, if you are willing to have the rate increase, which one you support, please. Otherwise, it makes it more difficult for us to make a decision in the end.
Thank you. So anyone that has not had an opportunity to comment on the rates? And any more discussion by the board?
Go ahead.
Either way. So when we had the meeting down in Dallasport where we adjusted the rates, I think it was well understood by everybody that the, the automatic three percent wasn't holding up. I think it was pretty clear by everybody, we were going to need to adjust it every year based on CPI to keep everything going. As we are just in the hearing, considering rates, I personally believe operation and maintenance and all that affects rate. So I understand the citizen input on O and M contracts and whatnot, because I believe that has a, a place in the rate. I, I'm leaning at the five percent. I'm not sure there's pros and cons of the capital split. I'll worry about that one later, but I'm leaning towards the five percent, but I would, I would like to hold this over until next week and allow people more time.
Mr. Anderson?
Go ahead, if you, looking at a couple of numbers.
And right now, I'm leaning with Mr. Christopher, that I believe the documentation, we might want to give people a little more time and make a final decision next week.
The two hundred thousand that you've built in for the loan repayment? And that, that's for a grand total of how much in loan? Is that two point two?
It'd be a little over that.
A little over two point two for twenty year, what interest rate?
We just calculated it, I can't remember what
I would remind the board that if we do that, it's a different question. That's that later question, and we also have another public hearing for four minutes ago.
I understand, but I'm just, I'm trying to understand so that the, the community can understand, because what we have yet to get is any rate, anybody saying what they think the rate change should be. And I'm, and I'm, I'm in favor of holding it over, but I'm also trying to make sure that everybody knows that this is what we need to hear from you, we need to hear by Friday at five o'clock. And we need to take these things into consideration because when I look at the numbers and it's clearly showing that we're going to be going in the hole. And that's not including changes in power costs, that's not including changes in labor rates, that's not including you know, contingencies which need to go into operations. I can lean towards the five percent, but I also can, by my numbers, it's not realistic and logical looking forward. That that's going to be the actual cost.
And and that's why at the time, Commissioner, when we started doing that, I think we used like five percent, something like that for interest rates. So we're using today. Now, a lot of this is a lot of speculation, but when we started plugging the numbers in and we show that it goes you know, by 2027, we already have a problem. I mean, ultimately.
Afraid of, this is that with the high interest rates and taking the loan out today.
Right.
You, you're going to have your base charge, but then you're going to have another one over here. It's going to be almost as potentially as much as your base charge if interest rates remain high when we do this.
Exactly. So the idea is hopefully you can extend out that, but you're taking a risk. Because the longer you extend it out replacing those, those worn out parts, the better chance you have of something coming up, and now we have to come up with a half a million dollars to fix it.
Madam Chair, if you're ready?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to
We need to close the public hearing first.
So the public hearing is now closed. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to not close the public hearing as I am making a motion so that we can keep the public hearing open to written comments until Friday at 5:00 PM, so that the board can have deliberations and discussion next Tuesday at the time of staff's deciding. And I would also ask that staff update this as we can, so to aid in the deliberation next Tuesday.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second to any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for coming up, driving up.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve pay estimate number two for the Fairground Sale Barn project in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars fifty-three cents.
Second to motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay.
I figured we canceled Public Works too, so that's why I went ahead and did the pay estimate, let's move on here, we're behind.
We're canceled, and so we'll move to a supplemental budget hearing with fiscal manager Jen Neal.
Good morning.
Good morning. Did you have the sequence in front of you?
I do not.
Okay. Did you? So we'll open a public hearing for the purpose of supplemental budget hearing. Is what I have on my sheet, Jen, is that enough? Is that correct?
Yes.
And staff will present an overview, thank you very much.
Okay, so this would be our first supplemental of the 2024 fiscal year. The county stance on supplemental budget requests reflect a commitment to prudent financial management. Recognizing that the annual budget is established well in advance of its execution, the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges the potential need for amendments due to unforeseen circumstances or funding adjustments. Officials and directors are tasked with managing available resources efficiently, prioritizing expenditures and exploring avenues for cost saving savings before seeking budget adjustments. Historically, supplemental budget requests has been considered under specific circumstances, including occurrences or conditions not foreseen during initial budget preparation, necessitating financial adjustments, urgent need requiring prompt action, unanticipated funds becoming available from the federal, state or local sources, reductions in available resources prompting the need for appropriation adjustments. In this current cycle, there are a total of fourteen supplemental budget requests, among these, eight are deemed budget neutral, indicating that sufficient revenue is available from sources such as grants or saved fund balances amounting to six million four hundred and two thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Additionally, three requests involve technical accounting and adjustments, while the remaining three necessitate intervention from the Board of County Commissioners to authorize budget adjustments totaling two hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. In the event that the board approves all supplemental budget requests, a strategic plan has been placed to allocate funds from the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund to cover the two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars required for budget intervention. These funds were unanticipated dollars received related to COVID, thereby ensuring minimal impact to the county's financial stability. This approach reflects a commitment to responsible fiscal management and prioritizes the efficient allocation of resources to meet the needs of the community.
I'm sorry, Jen, I was reading. So are we at board clarification, public statements, or open the public hearing for the purpose, public comment? Testing, public testimony, great. So is there anyone in the room that would like to come forward and testify? Or anyone online? It's a quiet day.
The supplemental budget?
I see no one.
If no one has had a chance to review.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Get into the microphone.
Yes.
You'll have to come to the mic.
My name's Clay Munson. I just got a quick question, the three supplementals that we talked about at two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two twenty-eight, which departments are asking for the supplement?
That would be the sheriff totaling one hundred and thirty thousand two hundred, emergency management seventy thousand four hundred and eighty-four, and the commissioners thirty-five thousand five hundred and forty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
And for additional clarification, this has been posted online for three weeks and in the board packet.
Documents are in the board packet posted, yeah.
And I see no one online and no one else in the room? And does the board have any questions, clarifying questions of the public statements?
Yes.
Thank you, Jen. So when I'm reading your overview of the sheriff through the three-year-old invoices, and it says in 2021, the jail spent fifty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-two out of their seventy-three thousand dollar medical budget. Was that from the previous budget amount, or is that including part of these hundred and thirty thousand dollars that you're looking to move over there? Are you given an overview of the actual spent at that time, or is this, so that was the actual, so? So at that time, they'd paid these bills amounting to this much, but we have bills from twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three that we're going to be paying in 2024's budget with a budget intervention, which didn't get paid when they were, you know, due. Do you think that and that so looking forward, I guess, what I'm assuming is that line item for medical budget needed to be much higher because we didn't end up, we spend up spending medical budget needed to be much higher because we didn't end up, we spend up spending the money, but we didn't pay a bunch of bills as well.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I'm just making sure that we have this because we're gonna be going into budget season and that budget needs to be higher. And so what you've got here does not cover the actual expenses for the medical that occurred at the time.
What what was budgeted for would not.
Have covered it, yes, for any of those years.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my next question, emergency management, the seventy thousand, four eighty-four is a budget intervention, but do we actually expect that to be a budget intervention, or do we expect that to be budget neutral, considering that we got the FEMA declaration and will likely be reimbursed for that?
Um, it's potential that it could be. Um, as far as I am aware, FEMA reimbursement is still not a hundred percent guaranteed at this point. My experience so far with FEMA is sometimes it doesn't come through at the end of the, the end of the day.
But we're hoping that that's actually gonna be a budget.
It is a possibility that it will be a a budget neutral, and hopefully it results in that, that will be reimbursed.
And then under the commissioners, that is, is that whole thirty-five thousand dollars for, uh, indigenous defense or public defense?
Yeah, for the new contracts. Um, the budget was built before the contracts were finalized.
Okay. And that should cover the whole year, or that should cover just?
Alyssa. Um, the supplemental request that you submitted for public defense, would that cover the whole year of the contract? Yes.
Good, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Christopher.
I have one clarification that kind of comes up with the last public hearing. Uh, wastewater treatment center budget.
Yes.
Have we reached out to the P U D and, uh, I guess for lack of a better term, use the term demanded, that they provide us their budget for next year before we do our budget?
Well, we have an agreement that they will provide it to us by, uh, in October, October fifteenth. Sorry, I couldn't.
So we should have their budget by the time we finalize our budget.
Um, best case scenario, yes, we should.
Good enough. Because that would eliminate the need for potentially one more supplemental.
Yeah, and and that one's just an adjustment. We we build the budget knowing that they're gonna come in at a later time and and change a few things. Um, so in the last couple of years, when where we were trying to get through the budget, move it up a little earlier to make sure that we're adhering to those statutory deadlines. We, Public Works myself, and I know I've ta- I'm pretty sure I've talked to the board about this, um, just build it with our best generalized um, guess, and then we just modify it when we finally get their budget in.
So I'll go ahead.
Next question, um. So for the commissioners, we're expecting that this is going to to handle the rest of the year. Are we thinking that the, for the sheriff's department, we might see another supplemental before the end of the year?
I'm not sure.
For medical, because this is covering just medical, right, and the retirement?
I I'm not sure. Our system, um, our accounting software, we does not operate as an A P system. We, it's utilized as a check writing system, so I'm unable to see invoices that are pending, not paid at this point in time, so I cannot answer that intelligently.
I guess my, you know, like, we're we're trying to fix it for the rest of the year under the commissioners. If we're fixing, in essence, we're fixing a line item in the sheriff's budget, right, which is something we don't usually do, I think.
Typically don't do supplementals like that, but, um, I would hope that that would be all of it.
But is, I guess where I'm. Where I'm going with that, though, is is if we, we know we overspent the previous three years, and then we're making a budget supplemental today, we're doing budget supplemental to actuals, or are we actually building in the as if the expectation that they might go over again, like they have the last three years, and we're building that buffer in there so they don't have to come back for another?
I believe that would be a fair assumption, but I would prefer not to speak on assumptions at this point in time. If you look at their, if you're forecasting off of their burn rate, it would indicate that, yes, there will be an issue by end of October, November.
For the medical, for this this category or?
As a whole.
Oh, the budget as a whole, okay. But we don't know if this is actually taken into consideration, the expectation of between now and the end of the year. So the th- this is an actual, then?
I I would say, um, historically, the numbers, um, that have been provided to me of what's actually billed from Clickatet Valley Health on an annual basis, that, um, that medical line was significantly under budget. Or budgeted way lower than historical annual build. So, um, but again, I'm not sure because I don't know who has been sent, what's going on on a real-time basis.
But if we, um, intervene now with this, and it is this second one, uh, due to the overage at the end of last year, this would be the second one helping catch up that we intervene on. Um, is there wiggle room in the budgets that they can self-adjust to help head off what might come in the fall?
Well, the expectation is that directors and elected officials, if they're seeing and you know, their that their spending or their operations is going to take them over budget, it has always been the board's expectation that they re-prioritize, they reevaluate their plan for the year, and they look at how they are functioning and what they're spending on before asking for a supplemental.
Mr. Christopher, any more comments?
I don't have anymore.
I think we could close the public hearing.
Nope.
Nope. Go ahead and ask if there's further public comment.
Good testimony.
I just assumed there is none. Public testimony. We do, we have one. I wasn't looking up.
My name is Tracy. I'm from Lyle, and I just had one question, and I apologize, I don't have the legislative, um, uh, legislation that went through, but I remember Jeff King saying, I believe it was sixty-one, sixty-three, or thirty-six or something. There were two sixes in it, and it was about, um, the public declaration of emergency and having to do a public, um, let the public know of what the emergency is, and he was saying that it would, it would increase staffing, it would cause the emergency management a lot of money. I know it was passed, it goes into effect on Ju- June first, and I just wondered if those monies were included in this hearing. So.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Tracy. Uh, no more further public comment from anybody who has not got to testify? Okay, we'll close the public hearing to further public testimony. Is that good?
Go ahead. I already want to do it.
And discussion, any more discussion by the board? No?
I, I guess all I will say is, I would hope that all of our directors and electeds, um, analyze their budget, keep track of their budget, and make sure they come in under budget at the end of the year, barring emergencies. Uh, and hopefully, if there are emergencies, they let us know what that emergency is when it happens and not at the end of the year.
Thank you.
And I would say for these budget interventions, um, you know, the the first like this, this is the first one. Usually, it's taking care of things in the past, like where things may have happened. Um, for example, the this ice storm in January that caused the seventy thousand dollars in emergency management. You're you're catching up to the issues that that have happened that are, you didn't know about. For the sheriff, we're paying bills from previous years. Uh, for the commissioners, it was an agreement that we didn't have finished and finalized, so all those make sense. Um, you know, this is a seven million dollar, was it seven? I don't want to be misquoted. Almost eight million dollar, uh, total request. With that, only two hundred and thirty-six thousand of that, uh, is a budget intervention, so uh, we will potentially see more budget interventions later on in the year, but that at the first one, people are still expected to operate within your budgets, and that this is just a, a regular doing of county government. Doesn't mean people are doing things wrong, in essence.
If I can add to that as well, um, yeah, the first one on top of everything that you had just said, the first one is a lot of times tends to be those things that we didn't know when we built the budget. We we start building the budget in June of the prior year. Um, so things come up. Public Works Road Fund is a perfect example. Five point three million dollars. They received a grant to get some work done on some roads. Okay, that that money can only go to those projects in the road fund. So it was unknown at that point in time when they built the budget. Now it was awarded. We make those adjustments through the supplemental process, and that is what, uh, per R C W, that is a true supplemental. When you receive revenue that you were not expecting, that those adjustments are being made.
Okay. If what you would like to do, motion or?
This doesn't need to be passed today, does it?
The supplemental?
Right. We we can pass it next week, um, and put it on the consent agenda, correct?
Uh, I suppose you could do that.
If you have more things you need to do.
We just got no public testimony. Sorry, we got one.
We almost never do for supplementals. I can't even remember.
We usually don't, and and for clarification, you, I.
Under did one once, but.
I am, I also, um, you know, offered the written comment, um, to the B O C C email. Um, I made sure that that email was in the, um, legal posting in the newspaper. Um, there was none received. I did a news flash on the website. Um, so. Yeah, I mean, historically, typically, since I've been in this position, we really don't get public comment on something else.
I would prefer to make a motion, get this off our plate, move on to other things.
Okay. Feel free.
Go ahead.
Um, Madam Chair, I move that we pass the first supplemental budget of the year. It is a dollar amount, I think. Is there a dollar amount here?
Is.
Um.
Seven million, you want?
I can write it, too. The first, pass the first supplemental budget request of seven million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Um, I do want to make mention for anybody that just heard that number, you might want to look at the, look up the number and go back into our discussion because all but about two hundred thousand of it is new money coming to the county, not more money we're spending out of your tax dollars.
I will second the motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Um, I would like to add a little bit, um, I hope that that's the last of unforeseen items that come through that are needing a supplemental to catch up in the sheriff's budget. And I hope we move forward in a way that they readjust their numbers and they don't have to come forward with another supplemental that cures the past rather than how we use supplementals, uh, because I would be inclined to be a hard no on that.
Well, I guess I have to speak for that. If you're a hard no, then I don't know what we do, have audit findings, whatever, but I I find it unfortunate that we continue to hound on the sheriff's past medical bills when anybody in this community is well aware of billing issues at K V H. So just because it's for an inmate from two years ago doesn't necessarily the bill got hammered out and it became our bill and not the city of Goldendale's bill. So, well, you guys have been being politic- political here for twenty minutes, so I'm just trying to say that there there's many.
And I'll, I'll just.
People responsible for late billing.
I'm not gonna throw the neighbors under the bus, but I am gonna say it's understandable and trackable and account, good accounting, uh, to keep yourself in a safe zone within our budgets, and that's what I like to see going forward. Uh, so with that, motion in a second, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. And Jen, do you have something else for us?
Uh, I do. Un- unfinished business. Um, the the board, um, had directed staff in a motion on, um, March twenty-ninth, um, to start negotiating contracts, um, and do the research, um, and build a report in regards to um, corrections or jail options. So I do have that report done and available to you, um, and we are scheduled for workshop on Thursday to go into detail, so we'll give you this.
This Thursday?
Third.
Okay.
Let's see, hopefully I got a little time to read that, yeah.
Yeah, your workshop, so to give to you today so that you have plenty of time to really go over it.
And, um, just to be clear to the public, uh, Elise will be posting, or you'll be posting that online. Okay, I'll let you go.
Thank you.
There will be a printed copy in the commissioner's, um, office, and there will be a digital copy posted on the web page. Um, and.
On your webpage, on the financial?
I believe under the B O C C.
Okay, great.
Yeah. The, um, this really isn't budget-related, so in regards as a whole, so under the B O C C, I think is a better place for that. Um, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Did we ever get any responses back from Sheriff's Office on the questions?
No, we did not, and there is a Q and A section within, within the report where I had, um, put together the questions, um, that staff was able to ask or answer, um, from Commissioner Christopher, Commissioner Anderson, um, the sheriff's office, when they, um, had public comment and handed out a packet, I put those as in there that we were able to research and answer. Um, there were, there was some questions, um, or, or statements from you, Commissioner Christopher, that, um, staff, it it was more of a statement to your seatmates or question or related to your seatmates that I didn't feel was my place to, to provide a response, so I didn't include those in this part of it. But you, you all have access to that and have had access to those, um, since April twelfth, I believe. Um, in that task tracker that we presented.
See in the documents that I was provided, you answered some of them. This is more of a statement, not a question.
And then there was, and there was one that, you know, where I would, I would block it so that staff wouldn't go try and, you know, answer it so they knew they could move on from that. Yeah. Yes.
And you were, Madam Chair, you were gonna, I think we're gonna discuss that the workshop on Thursday is a chance for board discussion, staff discussion, not audience participation, and that folks could could could, um, submit their questions to the B O C C.
Yes, in writing.
In writing.
Yeah, they'll have a chance.
We'll do the best we can to try and address those when we can.
Great, that'll give the public a chance to address their questions.
I would like to thank staff, uh, for all of your hard work and dedication to this. I know you've been working nights and weekends trying to get all this done. Um, I cannot say enough about how hard our, our departments, uh, and staff work on a regular basis, but this is above and beyond. Um, thank you so much for your time, um, to all of those who worked on this.
Thank you, thank you very much. And and it hasn't been an easy subject. It's hard on everybody in a lot of different ways, emotionally, mentally. It's, it's been a tough task, so I appreciate everything you've done. Okay.
Just for the public hearing, I know on the thirtieth, planning has a number of workshop topics. Are we gonna, is this topic gonna be in the morning or in the afternoon, just starts, wait and see?
I would put it as the last item of the day because we don't know if it'll be a five-hour discussion or.
Okay, I just, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very, very much. Okay. Okay, should we, do we read that one and go ahead and do it for him?
Yes, if we can. It's. One of these? Thank you. Because I was looking.
While you're looking for that, I do have one thing under unfinished business that I would like to bring up. It is just a board request of staff. Our Zoom meetings, we have the, uh, countdown clock on there, which was a recommendation um, to put that on there. Um, I would like to ask staff if there was a way to put an actual clock on there as well, so we know what time. This, because like when you watch a video, you're three hours and twenty-seven minutes into it, it'd be nice to know at what time of day that is. So when you're going, yes, so if it's on here, it can be on the recording. So it would be like your countdown clock, but it would just be a little clock in the corner that shows you what time it is.
So you want to leave the time of the day, not the time of the recording, because then it's going to get really confusing, right? Because when you post it, it's whenever you do it, and then you go online, it's like four hours into it.
Yeah, but as you stand forward, you're going to see it's one o'clock. Well, now you know it cordillates with what's on the agenda at one o'clock. And it's easier for people to find and have to go forward and just search scan.
There might be a.
So they, if, if there's a, yeah, I can't imagine it's not an option, but it just makes it interesting. So if somebody wants to see, well, I want to see the public works update. They can just stand forward and tell the clock.
Hand on there and record it.
Somewhere in the corner, I, it, it doesn't have to be big, just somewhere where it's.
I got.
From Zoom, yeah. I think it'd just be easier for people to go back and look at stuff, especially if it's a specific item they wanted to go see off the, the agenda.
It is hard.
So if that passes, if we can look and see that, thank you. It just doesn't want to be staff without order proof.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Madam Chair, we have before us a matter of establishing an outdoor burn restrictions within the unincorporated areas of Clickitap County, uh, Zone Two. Uh, my motion, uh, is to approve that, uh, effective Monday, June third, twenty twenty-four.
I will second the motion and hope I don't have anything to burn.
Hurry up and get her done. Motion and a second, any discussion?
It's been way too windy to get her done.
All those in favor?
I, I.
I. Motion passes, thank you.
Yeah, one year, three years couldn't burn because by the time it was dry enough, it was too windy and too dangerous, so. My Christmas tree pile got big that year.
Okay. Well, that's all we have. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
No, you've got something?
Might want to recess for Skamania.
Yeah, oh, okay, sure, we're going.
And, and, um, was it printed in our agenda, the physical location that we're meeting at? I figured it was, okay, because I don't have it somewhere. So I can.
So we will be adjourning for the county commissioners?
We're not adjourning.
We're recessing.
Recessing, thank you, having.
We're recessing for lunch, we will be.
Recessing for lunch, but we'll be back in a different location. We're meeting with the Skamania County Commissioners today at two thirty at the Hegewold Center.
At two four zero Northwest Vancouver Avenue, the first floor. Uh, it's actually at the courthouse, not at, at the Hegewold Center, so.
Thank you.
It was on the, um, first floor, um, so it's in their chambers, it looks like, and if you go online, you can get the Zoom login information uh, off the internet.
Yeah, just to be crystal clear to everybody listening, we will not be using our Zoom this afternoon, we will not be in the chambers, we will be in Skamania County using their Zooms, if you want to hear it, you have to log into their. With that, I will second if I haven't.
I, I don't think, did you make a motion, or you just said we were going to do it?
You made the motion, I second.
I didn't make a motion. She just said we were going to do it.
Oh.
So I, I'll take that back and go ahead and do a motion.
Before we make a motion, um, would, is there anything that we'd like to discuss, uh, between us before going down there and discussing it with them?
We picked our subjects.
Okay, I didn't know if we wanted to be on the same page on anything before we went down, but I'm fine, okay. Madam Chair, I would make a motion to, uh, recess the regular board meeting, uh, noting that we will be meeting with the Skamania County Commissioners at two thirty P M at the Skamania County Courthouse, two forty Northwest Vancouver Avenue, uh, on the first floor. Uh, it will not be zoomed via our regular Zoom, it will, uh, be using, uh, Skamania County Zoom, which you can find the link on the agenda page.
I will second that motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I, I.
I, thank you very much. So, we will meet you guys there.